All right, if you recite the pledge with me. I pledge my allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah. I bow out to this awesome God we serve. Heavenly Father, again, it is always a holy moment, Father, when we can communicate with you. In your word, the Bible says that you are delighted when your children call upon your name. And Father, we just want to thank you for the many blessings that we receive. Blessings some that we take for granted, especially this wonderful country in which we live in, Father. The freedoms, privileges, opportunities each of us have. And we thank you for the greatest gift of all, and that is the gift of your son, Father. And we confess with our mouth that he is the Lord, and we believe in our hearts. You raised him from the dead. He defeated sin, and then he defeated death. Because those of us that confess with our mouth that he's Lord and believe that you raised him from the dead shall live forever in this wonderful world that you're going to create. We thank you for it. And we ask you to continue to bless this administration as we move forward. Bless each and every person here, Father. Bless the families that they represent, for we know that family is one of the apples of your eye, Father. We thank you for it. And now we just give you praise and adoration in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Cryer?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Hoppower?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
I think we have citizens in the audience. Before we start, Ms. Roberts? Ms. Brown, please.
Probably.
Yeah, at least she's on here, and I even handled all that. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I think I can talk loud enough.
Good.
Hi, y'all. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Rocka and all of our city council. Thanks for having me here. The main reason I'm here today is just to talk to you as a Westlake resident. I'm new since January here. My husband, Jody Robert, and I are here on Reserve Drive out there on the golf course. So, last time I was here, I believe last year, I was talking to you about a nonprofit that we just were so glad to get a United Way grant for to kick off. My husband and I moved back from Baton Rouge because of so much devastation in southwest Louisiana, and I talked to you about that project. Last year, it went really wonderfully, and the first phase of it ended this summer. That was Business and Workforce Recovery Solutions. Very glad to say we haven't even announced it yet, but United Way did fund another phase of the project. It's coming soon. And any of our small businesses, nonprofits, workers and families that have been devastated by, well, continue to be impacted by the COVID crisis or the hurricanes, can apply and it's free because of the service, of the funding from United Way. And so that's one project I wanted to mention. Again, I gave you a bio, and that's just a summary for you to have a little bit about me from the, from my servant heart, a little bit about my family, but mainly about the nonprofit, where I've been with losing everything myself and our family being impacted again in Laura and Delta like y'all all were as well. And just to mention the nonprofit. And I forgot to mention, thank Kenny and Michael for allowing me to be added to the agenda. One other thing that I did want to mention, a different hat. Wearing a couple of different hats today. And that's my consulting business, Kathy Dennison and Associates Professional Services. And that is a consulting business I've had for over 20 years, doing grant writing, strategic grant consulting, training and consulting. And I mentioned that to you as a Westlake resident because I know there are so much grant funds out there and so many funding, not only for the hurricanes and the disaster recovery, but also for helping our citizens and our nonprofits and even our small businesses to seek grant funding. So I mentioned that to you coming from the hat that I'm wearing as a business consultant, a trainer, a strategist, a strategic planner, and someone can really help the city and the citizens in our area to maybe bring in more grant funds. And so I did want to mention that today. It's a little bit odd wearing a nonprofit and a for-profit hat. And a nonprofit hat is part-time and rejuvenating or regenerating in southwest Louisiana. The for-profit hat, if you look on my website, Kathy Dennison Associates, the link is at the bottom of your bio page. That's my email to that, Dennison Associates. It's an old website, hasn't been updated in a while, but it still has good info. The phone number is there at the bottom if you're interested in more about that. And also, the email for Business and Workforce Recovery Solutions and nonprofit hat that I'm wearing is there for you too. So I am so thankful and grateful as a Westlake citizen to stand here and present both of these organizations to you and offer contract assistance. And we'll be open for any questions right now if you have any questions for me.
So if somebody, one of the residents on the nonprofit side needed your services, I know they actually reach out to you and contact you.
Well, they're on the website. If it's, if it's a non, okay, here's where we have to split hairs. If it's a nonprofit question, the United Way is funding a partial project that only allows a certain number of people to be reached. So if we are within that scope, I would love to help them if they're a nonprofit that's been impacted by COVID or the disasters. And we can help them with multiple services. It's comprehensive case management. I'll be glad to tell y'all more about those services. And that's Business and Workforce Recovery Solutions. And if it's someone that is looking for contract services that are any kind of business, any type of individual or government entity, then that's Dennison and Associates. Any one of those can be, agencies or needs can be reached at 337-502-1911. And that number's at the bottom there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? Thank y'all so much.
Appreciate you coming. All in favor?
All right. First item we have is the consent. Need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
Motion by Mr. Brown.
Approved.
And, uh... Mr. Cryer? Second. Mr. Hayes, second, I'm sorry. All in favor? Unanimous. Oh, Mr. Hayes, second, I'm sorry.
All right. No bid items, discussion items. Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove upholding the zoning board's approval to change the zoning of 1416 McHemmy Street from Orwell Residential to RM Multi-Family. The owner is Eddie Wayne Pruitt at Ux, but this was requested by Heidi Vincent and Anthony Thompson.
Got a motion by Mr. Hayes?
Yes, to approve.
Second by Mr. Bergeron. All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, we need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove upholding the variance board's approval to allow Melissa Fields to place a salon on her property located at 1016 Pullman Street.
Mr. Bergeron, approve. Mr. Hayes, second. Mr. Hayes, second, yes, I'm sorry. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove Resolution 3623. This is a resolution requesting financial assistance from the state of Louisiana under the fiscal year 2022, 2023, local government assistance program known as LGAP and to execute any and all documents therewith.
Motion by Ms. Hoppower. Second by Mr. Cryer. All unanimous?
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove Resolution 3624. A resolution requesting financial assistance from the state of Louisiana under the fiscal year 2022, 2023, Community Water and Enrichment Fund, CWEF, and to execute any and all documents therewith.
Motion by Mr. Brown. Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove Resolution 3625. A resolution authorizing Daniel W. Rocka interim mayor of the city of Westlake, Louisiana, to enter into a time contract for the collection of solid waste between the city of Westlake and Waste Management of Louisiana LLC and to execute any and all documents therewith.
Motion by Ms. Hoppower. Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove Resolution 3626. This is a resolution authorizing Daniel W. Rocka interim mayor of the city of Westlake, Louisiana, to opt either in or out, you'll need to tell me, of the Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, Temporary Housing and Shelter Assistance Program, expedited Temporary Housing Assistance Waiver of Land Use/Permitting Form and execute any and all documents therewith.
We had talked about this last week. We wanted to opt out. Remember? So make a motion. Mr. Hayes, make your motion. Opt out. Second by... Mr. Brown. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove Resolution 3627. A resolution accepting and awarding the remediation, abatement, stabilization, temporary facility work of the city impacted facilities from hurricanes Laura and Delta to rat-clip construction and to authorize Daniel W. Rocka interim mayor of the city of Westlake to execute any and all documents therewith.
Need a motion? Motion by Ms. Hoppower. Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove promoting P.D. Santiago Barreras to senior corporal on the recommendation of Chief Chris Willright.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron. Second by Mr. Cryer. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove introducing ordinance number 1006, an ordinance placing a moratorium on manufactured homes in the area between Sampson Street East to the Countess River and Sulphur Avenue South to the Olive Creek Boulevard.
Motion by Mr. Brown. Second by Ms. Hoppower. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove Resolution 3628. A resolution authorizing Daniel W. Rocka interim mayor of the city of Westlake to enter into an agreement with GoGov Inc. for Citizen Request Management, CRM, Citizen Notifications and Alerts and Code Enforcement Case Management and to execute any and all documents therewith.
Mr. Brown made a motion. Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor? Unanimous.
Need a motion and a second to approve and or disapprove going into executive session regarding Todd Mathis versus the city of Westlake, number 2002-3603.
Motion by Mr. Bergeron. Second by Mr. Brown. All in favor? Going into executive session.
So that's still going to happen? So y'all, that's what you need to come in. Correct.
Yeah, because I think for this, I have the fact that a different clerk, the clerk's writing it down. What is that? Well, we, as in, we are in the joint with the other families.
So you didn't say, I don't want it.
Correct. You just check. Yeah, check with us first. And then we know where they come from.
That's it.
I had some... Because I had to, I grew up with a missionary who jumped in for 40 years. Died at 25. Three years old.
We still kicking. It'll be all right. Really? The major sets in. Oh, and then didn't speak. Kicks another kid. One of the best ladies I've known. We still need good... Christmas. I warmed it up. She's, I don't want to go. I lay my head on her. Thinking I'd get one by me. I don't know. They don't keep me posted. I might read about it in the paper.
He showed up in all the store. We're there for all the simple. We stepped on the store.
Come on, for the last year.
We got, we got a couple of seventy-five dollars. And guess how much? It's now over a billion dollars. That means five hundred percent. That was my retirement board that I was in.
Our parents are sitting from a time very...
I'm surprised they allowed us to get paid.
I thought it was...
Our hall, our last hall.
Oh, no, I never...
Oh, my God.
They had a ton of... They had a ton. Well, they had a ton of them. It was in the sound breaker part. I had a spot there, so. I had a ton. Separately.
Well, that's a damn hot.
The tornadoes, I don't care if it's raining, the lightning, the thunder. And I always come to a door. We don't ever have tornadoes come to, I mean, Hurricane's too hot. No, they come to it one, two, or three in the morning, where you can't stop. I did too. We, my friends, we left. We left.
We were back there. Right, you never sign them up on the city. I'm gonna take her hand, which is always like two thirty, three o'clock. Signed with, around, it was like. It's power without just a tail. Never lost power. Good. It was, uh, Miami.
That's the one they bought.
Is it gas?
I didn't hear it.
One time.
I had my state, I had something to say. State form.
I knew, but you gotta justify. To get them also. Oh, damn, I have a little bit.
Yeah. If there's, if there's even.
There is.
Get after it. They don't move, they don't follow.
Let's count.
I was thinking, go back to the other way. And build the cross.
It's not, you know, I'm a little bit, but you'd be more cautious. You know, they, but, yeah.
That's what we're talking about. No, I also didn't go into the latest lady. I got so much to do.
It's gonna be something to see. I mean, it's that.
The road, the home, that's just all the guilty.
Uh, sort of be like, rather than being a lover, lover, be a traitor. If I have an accent, I don't think it's. He had, what he's got, something. He's, he's a lot of patriots.
It's actually a road that's, uh, on the same path as the side. So if the city never wanted to real, the city.
Yes. I'll admit, they brought up every, that's a chip from me and Tony. Over the city center. It got, it got moved. Lost what, this one, but it got, uh, not behind the other. Kind of other house. Basically, yeah. I heard a guy.
So we, what's we use?
What do you think, boy? What's awesome? We were trying to.
Uh, we're talking about. Oh, I do.
Make a motion, we go back to record session, maybe. I'll second it.
Second was better, wrong, everybody. Unanimous. Make a regulation. Not the time, call it. Let's see, where are we? Update. Make your motion.
I want to make a motion to approve Macy, we went forward with that.
So, now make the motion, just any second. I will do it unanimously. Okay.
Okay, um, update items, we have the, uh, update on the Couchy Parish summer feeding program for the children. Our locations in Westlake was the Westwood Elementary and Recreation District. And you can see the numbers for June and July of twenty twenty-one. We had a total meal served of, in twenty twenty-one, is six thousand two hundred and twenty-three. And compared to, uh, June, July of twenty-two, total meals served was sixty-four fifty-seven. Uh, and the synopsis of this year, Westwood Elementary and Recreation District served two hundred and thirty-four more meals compared to last year, which is a four percent increase. Fifteen seventy-seven more lunches compared to last year, which is a forty-six percent increase. And thirteen forty-three pure breakfast compared to last year, which is a forty-eight percent decrease. And that data was, uh, provided by the Couchy Parish Police Street Human Services Department.
That's a good, uh, event, summertime for the kids. It's my opinion, if we could, all of them have free lunch all the time, I don't think it's gonna happen, maybe someday. Okay. We have to make a motion and accept that.
No, no, sir.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Vire, you ready for your report?
Mr. Turner, update. John Stein. Good news about John Stein is, is, uh, they're working on a punch list. And, uh, as far as I know, uh, most of the major items are, have been completed and, uh, DOTD is working with us on finalizing that, but contractor will be held to the spec and, uh, they will recommend closeout procedures, uh, once the, uh, punch list items have been addressed. Uh, the concrete work is good. Uh, drives, uh, drives good. And, uh, just took a little while to complete. Most people, a few days, I would say, I didn't even know it was in, in a, a construction problem, you know? But, uh, the good news is, 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 is packed. Foster Lane and Jones Street Sewer, that project has been completed by Williams. And, uh, it's in closeout, uh, and it, it should be, uh, wrapped up pretty soon. I think all houses are tied into it, to my knowledge, at this point. Next project is the, uh, hole number fourteen drainage improvements. Contractor on that is, uh, HD Truck. They have started construction on it, and, uh, they have until December eleventh to complete it. Next project is the, uh, procurement of the drainage pipe. This is where, uh, we received a grant, uh, Westlake, the Act one nineteen of the two thousand twenty-one retrocession. We received a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand. We took bids, we got the pipe. To my knowledge, all the pipe has been delivered. Uh, we don't have a final corrected invoice at this point, but all I can tell you is we got to close it out before December. Uh, and I don't think that'll be a problem. They're all conscious of the timeframe, which is, uh, the pipe is laid out there, you see it. We think we probably should be covering it, uh, due to the ultimate raise on, I think. And that can be worked out here in the near future. So that project will be closed out as soon as we, as far as we care for it goes. Now, we still have to find a way to install it, but, uh, we are working with, uh, the Baron, the finance man. We think we have a way to do that. Next project is the Myrtle Springs Improvements. This is another, uh, DOTD project. And right now, that project is being currently reviewed by Metro Black, the Black and Commission. Uh, we're thinking about getting that project moved to another location, which I'll comment on here in the next paragraph. Uh, Garfield's Drainage Street Project. Uh, I guess, uh, best thing I'm gonna say is, it's set on the side, needs to be designed. We will, hopefully, we can do that pretty soon. The sanitary sewer equalization system. That is a large project that would accommodate community growth, future growth of Westlake. And it's about seven and a half million dollar project. We have about five B lined up, and, uh, we did get approval from the water sector to, uh, get an extension on doing the plans and specs until the end of January, or January third, not the end. But we also in the process will be adding, trying to go up with a couple more B bucks to complete that project. Uh, so that we can receive a bidding. And this big project is compressed natural gas. Uh, that's a project that was set about five hundred thousand. That needs to be amended. And, uh, I told somebody last year, that was the first year I never did make a trip to Baton Rouge, but I will make sure that I will get this addressed. This was a little problem between our senators, uh, and the communication of the, uh, control of the Senate. And, uh, it just didn't get completed like it should have. We're gonna transfer that money over to the equalization. Next project is the Jones Street Water, Ground Storage Water Tank. Uh, plans have been approved by the Department of Health. Only thing they're waiting on is that they say they've got to do a rate study for the city of water system. According to my water bill, I think our weight's very well, it's. But I, I don't see a problem in, uh, water rates.
Yeah.
But for some reason, they haven't completed, the, the apartment house does their own study. Uh, all we have to do is wait on them. As we wait, prices keep moving up on, uh, projects like that. So anyway, you do have a five hundred thousand dollar grant that's, they're, they're, that's what we're getting, right? But they're also the ones that's holding it up due to the lack of, uh, probably manpower, if you wanna know the truth. Uh, hopefully, we can get that, uh, solved here very soon. And the next project is the Ponderosa Parkway. That is the road that goes from, uh, National Drive to Hollis Street. And that'd be immediately west of the, of the water park. Best described. And that would be going north and south. That would be the design and construction of urban collector from National Drive to Hollis. In an effort to facilitate residential, commercial, recreation, and school traffic demands at Westdrugs. Uh, this project is not limited to, but it's four thousand millimeter ported, kind, cement, concrete roadway, subsurface drainage, water distribution, sanitary sewer, and natural gas distribution. Estimated cost is about seven million. We think we can get that fully funded, where the city of Westlake will not be putting up any money. We just lean on some of the others. And that completes my report, Baron.
How is it forty percent funded?
Pardon?
What, what part would not come in?
Well, it's eighty, twenty.
Twenty?
But, uh, I'm just telling you, we think that we will get it funded without Westlake. Uh, but you have other entities that can participate.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Chief Will Rye, the Orleans, at a conference, so we got, Chief Duff, Fire Department, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, just wanna let y'all know that, uh, the other night, let me give you a little backstory. So the, the Fire Department has been working on about the last year, just special operations team. Uh, sometime last year, we were approved to buy a boat, and we've got, uh, give or take eight of our guys that spend a very significant amount of time, uh, on their own training, uh, doing, you know, water operations, uh, rope operations, uh, just a, a plethora of different things, you know, that, that go under this special operations thing. Uh, you know, they, they take the time away from their family, go to schools, uh, meet on the weekends at the fire station, and just take it upon themselves to, to get themselves ready. A couple of months ago, uh, and I say a couple of months ago, maybe about a year ago, we also attached to the Sheriff's Office Marine Division, started training with them. Uh, we've trained with Lafayette Police Department, you know, just a, 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 a lot of different agencies. Well, on the fifteenth of September, which was last Thursday, we got a call from Chief Will Rye that somebody had jumped into the water from the top of I Ten Bridge. So he called me, I called the guys out, uh, you know, they had to come from their houses, you know, some of them were working, some of them were at home. Uh, they mobilized, uh, they got out on the water, uh, they put in in Ridley's, and they started to do a search, uh, to one of the officers. Officer Lewis, you know, gave them the best idea of where they thought the person went in the water. Um, you know, but when you jump from the top of the bridge, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good area. Uh, so anyways, uh, I've got, uh, Assistant Chief Jenny Boyett was on land. Uh, I've got Daniel Brown, Chad Garner, and Stephen James in the boat, and they were able to locate the patient. Uh, he was barely above water. Uh, they were able to pull him out, uh, they were able to get him to a Canadian ambulance, uh, on the bank, and he was transported to the hospital. So this person actually survived the jump. Uh, the time that it took from the time we were dispatched to the time that the patient and the rescue was out of the water was thirty minutes. Which is, you know, crazy. And this is how crazy it is, the Sheriff's Office, they also mobilized. Uh, they got called by our boat and canceled about the time they were at the port where their station is, getting in their boat, getting ready to head this way. So in a matter of, you know, a couple more seconds, a couple more minutes, uh, that, that young person would have sunk underwater, and we would have spent a lot more time out there recovering the body. So I just wanted to recognize these guys.
Congratulations, boys. Very good, you men.
Just wanted to thank you, sir, to recognize them and to, uh, okay. Uh, thank y'all for allowing us to get the boat, because it's something we've worked at for years, we're surrounded by water. And we wanted to let y'all know, you know, one line, that, that paid everything, you know, everything off, and we hope to do a lot more in the future, so.
You did well, y'all did well. Thank y'all, you know.
How would you, you wanna, you wanna come up here? Y'all wanna take a picture with me?
She today, they, they made a beautiful recovery as well.
Yes. Yes, they did.
Okay, now everybody can be on the front row. Can all see Ms. Della?
Yep, she can see her. I can see, yep, good, looking good. Uh, go back where you were, Mr. Hayes. One mic will come between those two shoulders, good. And on three, and I'll take a couple, one, two, three, and one more. Thank you.
Wait, stay, 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 did you, did you get your picture? No, wait, stay. Did you get your?